At Salma Unified, we're more than a school district.
We are a community united in our commitment to every student's success.
We provide a nurturing environment where students thrive academically and socially.
At Salma Unified, we're more than a school district.
We are a community united in our commitment to every student's success.
We provide a nurturing environment where students thrive academically and socially.
From innovative instruction to valuable enrichment programs, we offer...
...a wide range of opportunities for every student to excel.
We inspire minds and shape futures.
Together, we are...
Together...
We are Salma Unified.
We are Salma Unified.
Together, we are Salma Unified!
Yeah!
At Salma Unified, we're more than a school district.
We are a community united in our commitment to every student's success.
We provide a nurturing environment where students thrive academically and socially.
From innovative instruction to valuable enrichment programs, we offer...
...a wide range of opportunities for every student to excel.
We inspire minds and shape futures.
Together, we are...
Together...
We are Salma Unified.
We are Salma Unified.
Together, we are Salma Unified!
Yeah!
At Salma Unified, we're more than a school district.
No?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright.
He's not here tonight. He's traveling, so he wouldn't make it.
Yay. Okay, welcome to the meeting, everybody. We're gonna do a call to order with a roll call. Mr. Medina.
Here.
Mrs. Duarte. Mrs. Kessler.
Here.
I am here. Nick is not here tonight. Okay, we're going to... There's a change to the agenda under the closed session. A, number two, has been removed. So, after seeing that, was there... Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Which one did you say?
Under the closed session, number two?
A?
Yeah, 6A2 is being removed altogether.
Oh, the whole thing?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, you have a second? Okay, you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No. Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn to close... Oh wait, no, I have to read this. Sorry, guys. Notice to the public: Public comment on closed session agenda items. This opportunity is provided in accordance with Government Code Section 54954.3 to allow the public to comment prior to the board's consideration of any closed session agenda item. Do we have any? Mr. Gomes?
No, not for the closed session.
Okay, let's go to closed session.
Microphone test, microphone test. Can you hear it? Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three.
No, can't hear it.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three.
At Salma Unified, we're more than a school district.
We are a community united in our commitment to every student's success.
We provide a nurturing environment where students...
At Salma Unified, we're more than a school district.
We are a community united in our commitment...
At Salma Unified, we're more than a school district.
We are a community united in our commitment to every student's success.
We provide a nurturing environment where students thrive academically and socially.
From innovative instruction to valuable enrichment programs, we offer...
...a wide range of opportunities for every student to excel.
We inspire minds and shape futures.
Together, we are...
Together...
We are Salma Unified.
We are Salma Unified.
Together, we are Salma Unified!
Yeah!
...
At Selma Unified, we're more than a school district.
Ready?
We are a community united in our commitment to every student's success.
No? Oh wait, now it is. You go.
We provide a nurturing environment where students thrive academically and socially.
Okay. All right, welcome back, everybody. We're gonna do a call to order for the regular board meeting of the Selma Unified School District.
From innovative instruction to valuable enrichment programs, we offer-
Mr. Medina, here.
A wide range of opportunities for every student to excel.
Ms. Duarte-
Here.
Mrs. Kessler-
We inspire minds and shape futures.
Here.
I am here, and Mr. Safoda is absent tonight.
Together, we are-
Okay, we gotta do flag salute.
Together-
Where's Mr. Lane? Would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
We are Selma Unified.
Would everyone please stand or remove your hats?
I'm gonna come up.
We are Selma Unified.
For the flag salute. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands
Together, we are Selma Unified!
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, your hand is wrong.
I don't know, I didn't hear. I guess this is on me, right? All right, bear with me, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna get through this. Okay, so we have the report of closed session. The board took action on Resolution FY 2537. Do I need to read any more than that, Wayne, or is that it?
The decision was to release.
Oh, okay, so we do so, okay. Decision was to release, and Item B had been removed prior to. Okay, school reports. You guys ready? Alyssa, what do you got?
Okay, good evening. This last week of February, we celebrated Cultural Week. We had various lunch activities such as trying food from around the world, painting the map, info board, and a Mexican dance performed. We had our preliminary class elections followed with our ASB elections. It was a very competitive week for all of our candidates. This past week, we had March Madness. Ten teams of three went against each other, and our championship game was yesterday. The start of Bear Days is this Friday. Bear Days is a week-long competition against teams of ten. They compete in games of trivia, scavenger hunts, tug-of-war, obstacle course, and Friday, the winner ends off with a dance performance and our Bear Tella Rally. This month is also Athletic Trainers Month. The last week of March, we are celebrating our athletic trainer, Misera, with dress-up days and activities at lunch. And now for Athletic Report. Winter season has officially ended with two more section championships to make a total of three section championships for Bear Nation this year. Bear Nation watched Lady Bear Soccer win over Miramonte in Bakersfield. The Lady Bears are Central Section Division Five champions, the Lady Bears first since 2010. Bear Nation, on consecutive days, watched Boys Soccer become the third Selma High School team to be crowned with 3-0 victory over Riverdale, the boys first since 2011. Boys and girls wrestling state qualifiers are here today. Girls, Kaylee Salazar, Chloe Furlong, here tonight as state qualifiers, Olivia Furlong and Juliana Alvarez. Boys here tonight are Caleb Cisneros, Manuel Gutierrez, Davidus Gutierrez, Jacob Hernandez, and Daniel Armaderas. Great year for Bear Nation athletics and extremely proud of our student athletes.
Right on, thank you very much. Okay, for Abraham Lincoln. Oh, do we have Lanny Perez or Casey Berry? Oh, sweet.
Good evening, my name is Tony Perez, and this is the ALMS School Report. Student self-intermural game. Last Wednesday during lunch, we held the intermural student-staff intermural indoor soccer game. The staff was victorious over both the 7th and 8th grade teams. Student have character event. Last Friday during lunch, we honored a select number of 7th grade students who exhibited the ALMS' sore traits of self-control, optimism, ambition, and responsibility. They were also, they were able to celebrate with their nominating teacher and their parents. 6th grade parent night. Last Wednesday, all 6th grader parents and students were invited to attend our elective showcase. Our performing arts classes performed, and all lectures that were offered had informational tables. 6th grade student visit. Yesterday, all 6th grade students from Selma Unified came together for 6th grade orientation. Students were welcomed with the Aaron Eagle spirit posters and decorations. They learned about elective classics, activities, and athletics that ALMS has to offer. They ended their time with a mini rally of games and the Eagle chant. Open House. This Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00 PM is Open House at ALMS. Please be sure to stop by to see all of the great things we have going on in classes. Athletics. Last week, our track team traveled to Central West High School with the first track meet of the season. This week is our season opener for softball, baseball, and boys tennis. 8th grade softball, 8th grade baseball, and boys tennis will have home games this Wednesday starting at 3:30. Come out and cheer them on, our students. Next Wednesday, we will have our first home games for 7th grade softball and baseball. Those games will also start at 3:30. We hope you can make it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, awesome, good job. Okay, public input. Members of the public wishing to address the Board of Education on matters within the jurisdiction of the board but not on this agenda may do so during the public comment period for up to three minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name. Do we have any?
We do, we have Julio Diaz. May come on up, okay?
Is this on? Is it on? Yeah, hello? You can hear me clearly? Yes, okay. This is a very touchy subject for me, so I'm gonna try to keep it together, as they say. So to put things in perspective a little bit, I'm a father of five. I've lost a daughter in 1999 to cancer. I had a son that was killed five years ago. So I put things in perspective about when my daughter attends Garfield Elementary School, who is an autism student, in perspective of what she means to me. Okay, on Thursday last week, I happened to drop by the school to pick her up early for her ABA therapy session at home, and came to find that she was restrained in a wagon. Now mind you, she's not being combative, aggressive, or poses a danger to herself or anybody on that playground. The teachers who, I shall, out of, I'll do her a favor and not put her name out for public scrutiny, had no explanation for me why she was being restrained. This is a five-year-old girl with autism. And what the teacher told me was that, well, we can't really keep an eye on her because she elopes what she does, because that's what she does, that's what kids with autism do, they take off and run. You know, we have to run after them. And she didn't, she had no answer for me why. Because she eloped? And then her, one of her excuses was, oh, there's only so many aids on the yard, and then if we have to take off running after her, it takes eyes off of the other kids. That sounds like a problem of understaffing. That's not my problem. That's not my daughter's problem. She shouldn't have to be restrained because somebody is deciding to be lazy and doesn't want to chase after her, or we're understaffed. Now, I looked up California State of Law. It says California Educate Education Code defines seclusions and certain types of restraints which are only to be used when a student possesses immediate threat to him or her or the safety of others. Mechanical restraints is defined as the use of a device, equipment, or restricts a pupil's freedom of movement. Now, the teacher, and I know I might go a little bit over, so if you might give me like 30 seconds for the pauses I did have, I'd appreciate it. She said, the teacher told me, well, she wasn't restrained, she was buckled in. I looked up the definition for buckled in, or buckled, past tense. Fasten with a buckle, he has buckled his seatbelt. Restraint, a measured condition that keeps someone or something from under control or within limits. This is unacceptable. There was two other kids in the wagon with them. Three special education students. There's nowhere near, there's no explanation. How can she or the principal tell me, oh, well, you know? Now, I'm not privy to the video, the principal called me, and she said she had watched the video, and they had tried to redirect her a certain amount of times. But you can't redirect a child with autism, that's their whole spectrum, they have no, my daughter doesn't even know her name when we call her. There's certain things she can and can't do. She's nonverbal. How are you gonna direct somebody who's nonverbal and doesn't understand? I know I'm getting over my time.
No, you're good, thank you for, thank you for speaking.
I have someone in the back that's gonna be with you. David, he's our People's Services Director, if you don't mind. If you have a little moment to spend, and he can take some of the information down, so we can get back to you.
I appreciate you guys' time, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, were there any others? Was that it? On that, Mr. Gomes? That was it? Okay. Okay, so we go to discussion action items under Superintendent. Special recognition to the Selma High School avid students.
All right, tonight we have a pleasure of recognizing a group of outstanding students from Selma High School's avid program. Avid, advanced via individual determination. Prepare students with skills and mindset needed to be college career-ready, empowering them to achieve their goals and make a lasting impact. So, our students are exposed to a world of opportunities, college visits, career pathways, et cetera. I'd like to welcome avid advisor Jennifer Mantar and some of our avid students up to the front to share their experiences and the impact this program has on their lives.
Good evening, thank you so much for letting us take some of your time this evening. I'm going to be brief because I have a few students that need to leave to help their siblings, but I want you to see your investments that you've made, the product of your investments, because it's pretty powerful. So I'm gonna step away, and they're just gonna speak briefly about 30 seconds to a minute of how Avid has impacted their lives.
Good evening, my name is Lupita Andria, I am a senior here at Selma High School, and I attend the Avid class here. Avid has helped me a lot, especially through my senior year, because I had to handle with Fricorico, which is, I have danced here in Los Paesanos, and also an academy here in Selma, and I also had soccer. So all this was very hard to manage between practices. And I think with Avid, it helped me have an extra class to catch up on assignments when I didn't have the time to do it outside, because of my practices. Also, it helped me with added info about scholarships and applications that I didn't know of. And then, also, I had this email in my, something in my mail, it came in, and it was like an application, a recommendation to apply for the Lyles College of Engineering. I didn't know about it. I came to Miss Mantar, and they helped me out about it. I applied for it, and I got accepted into it. So I will be taking that for personal state. And also, it helped me help others as well. With the information given from Avid, I helped my friends with FAFSA, and I was able to help them as well. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Edgar Reese, and I am a senior. I have been in Avid all four years of my high school career so far, and, I mean, Avid has been a big impact in my life, not only in mine, but my sister as well, who graduated here last year and a few years ago. Avid basically has gave me the help I needed for applications for colleges and for the financial aid especially, because when I get stuck on a certain portion, I ask for the help, and they know what I could do to get it done. And not only does they help me with the applications, with the field trips that they provide for us to the college campuses, it really shows me what I want to experience after my high school career. For example, we are, in April, we are going to UC Merced, which is a college that I am currently going to attend, which is where my sisters are also at. And I just believe Avid has an impact on everyone else in my class and every other grade, because they get the help and understand to what college has for them and what it has waiting for them. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Denise Trejo, I'm a junior in high school, this is my third year in Avid, and Avid has really helped me to become academically organized by having like study halls and tutorials, and has well, has prepared me for college to make sure like what type of college I would want to apply to for next year. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Haley Hurtado, I'm a junior in my second year of Avid. Avid was first introduced to me through friends recommending it for me to help stay on track in school, and I would say the program has helped me a lot in deciding for my future and what I want to do for my college career, and it also has expanded me to resources that I wouldn't think I would have possible without the Avid program. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Yedari Rios, and this is my second year in Avid, and by Avid, I got connected by my friends, because I had seen how organized they were, and it really called my attention, because it seemed fun, because they would do activities and and I'd just seen how they, like, explored new colleges, and it really called my attention. And ever since I joined, I've like been on track on school, I've been organized, and I've just been more vocal, like, I've been more outgoing, and I like talking to people, I like meeting new people, and it's just been fun to me, so I just love, I like Avid, and I recommend it to many people, like my brother. So yeah, thank you guys for your time.
Um, my name is Jose Santos. I'm a junior in high school, and this is my second year in Avid. Avid has helped me a lot with learning about new colleges and where I want to be in the future. I've learned a lot about scholarships, as well as universities and certificate programs, as well as two-year colleges. And Avid is just a really eye-opening program to a lot of people who aren't really, like, knowing about the other stuff that they could do after school, and it's just a really fun program for me to be in, as well as I take a lot of opportunities from it. Thank you for your time.
Hi. My name is Sunny Avila. I'm a senior, and this is my first year at Avid. Um, Avid has given me a lot of opportunities, and I really, I really just enjoyed the class overall. I've made a lot of really great friends, and without Avid, I would never find, I would never have figured out the Reedley Honors Program, which I'm gonna be attending next year. So yeah, thank you for your time.
My name is Brian Delgado, and I've been in Avid for all four years, and Avid has really helped me, because before I was introduced to Avid, I was really just a student who, I was just, had the mindset of, I'd go wherever the wind just took me, you know? But after I joined Avid, I was able to finally see all my options, because we were able to go to all the colleges that, around us, like, like Edgar said, in April, we're going actually go see UC Merced, so helps to see all of our opportunities in person, and it's made me realize what I've actually wanted to do with my future. Thank you.
My name is Elijah Anis, and I've been in Avid for three years since my sophomore year. Avid has improved me as a better student overall. It made me be more focused and do my work on time, especially Mrs. Manter, um, always telling us to get our work done, and especially during scholarships, she pushed that whole focus on scholarships, and we're able to get more done, and I'm pursuing to go to Fresno Pacific University. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Yasmin Abdullah.
My name is Betsy Martinez.
I've been a part of the Avid program all four years in high school, and I could easily say it was the best decision I could have made for myself. In the beginning of high school, you think to yourself, like, what is my purpose? Like, you're not focused, and I feel like as years went on, and honestly, just the time, I learned how to be focused and stay on top of everything I need to be, um, focused on, and I honestly am so grateful for every teacher in this program, because they really see you as a student for you. Um, if it weren't for them, I wouldn't be aware of all of the opportunities I've taken. Every single field trip we've been on has opened my eyes, especially now as a senior, I feel like the pressure is definitely on you, and I feel like the amount of support I've had is really just crazy, whether it's financial aid or applications. These teachers really devote themselves to this program and help you beyond anything, and they will take the time and sit by you and help you, and they truly see you for you. And the amount of relationships and friendships I've made through this program is amazing, and I will definitely miss it.
Um, I definitely agree with my peer Yasmin. Avid has really impacted me all my four years. I've been in it all four years, by the way, and I can definitely say that it has impacted me throughout all my four years of high school. I really struggled my beginning years, which were freshman, and I think in the midst of all the stress, the struggle of getting back from my huge failure, um, Avid was there, and all the teachers, including Ms. Manter, from Miss Vane to Alvarez, they really took the time to better me, and not just me, but all my other peers, which is something that is not easy to find in any classroom, simply because there's different classrooms that every student will always feel shy or just nervous, but with Avid, you'll always have that sense of comfort and family, and you'll build the strongest bonds in there. And I think that's really impacted me all my four years, along with all the scholarships, the financial help, as my peer said, and financial aid, everything, et cetera, that will benefit me in the future, it's definitely there, and I feel like I've taken advantage of it a lot, which I really appreciate, and it gives me the opportunity to help other students that aren't in the Avid program and really struggle to get to the opportunities that we have. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Lucas Machaca. I'm a senior at Selma High School. Starting my first year in Avid as a senior, um, I wish I would have joined sooner. The help and guidance I received from Avid has allowed me to explore opportunities I would have never been introduced to. Starting the year, I was looking at college as something that was not for me, but given the time, or given the opportunity to see college campuses and learn about their programs, it has helped me find a college and career I'm passionate about. This information may be available, or this information is available to everyone, but not everybody knows where to find it, which is why Avid is so important. The teachers have the knowledge, experience, and resources to help guide you through high school and prepare you for life after graduation. Without Avid, I don't think I would have been able to navigate the overwhelming process of applying to colleges and making decisions about my future. It's, it's not just about academics, it's about having a support system and the confidence to follow through with your dreams. In the fall, I plan to attend Grand Canyon University to informa, to major in information technology. Thanks to Avid, I'm no longer thinking about what could be, but actively planning for the path I'm truly excited about. Thank you.
Anyway, I just, I feel like their words are power, and I just wanna say thank you for your investment. Um, you have been able to provide us with field trips that a lot of us would not have experienced bef, without it, and because of these field trips, we have students that are interested in going to these colleges. Let's see if I can get this going here, so, um, we do community service, the field trips that we've been on are Cal Poly this year, we're gonna go to UC Merced, we went to Stanford and San Jose State last year, we went to UC Santa Cruz and Monterey the year before. Our senior trip this year, we went to Long Beach, um, we have a couple students that got accepted and also applied for the honors program there, Cal Baptist, we have a couple students who are interested in going there, UC Merced, and then, um, last year, we went to the Fresno City West Campus. Um, so these were some of the pictures of the colleges that we have attended, and student buy-in, um, we do the College and Career Fair, um, and of course, we have celebrate, um, so, celebrate with, uh, field trips. And this was the senior trip this year. And then, finally, which I was super excited about, um, Avid is about individual determination, and these kids, they definitely rose to the occasion. So we had, um, five students between the three-point-oh, three-point-five range, seven students between the three-point-six, three-point-eight-three range, and, um, eighteen of my twenty-eight students were four-point-oh to the four-point-six-seven range, um, at semester. And it's because they have a family of people themselves that believe in each other and support each other, um, and so yeah, super powerful, and we just wanted to say thank you. So, thank you for your time.
Any questions or comments from the Board?
Very impressive.
Yeah, what a testament, what a testament to these students, your guys' hard work, and your teachers, and your dedication to our students, just all around, awesome, great job.
Thank you guys for coming out here, but if you guys could hold off, because after a few more student presentations, we've got some goodies there for you guys. So thank you again, amazing work, Avid is amazing, been around it most of my life, and um, I'm always impressed to see what it creates, which is these great scholars, so thank you for that. So, hope you guys can hang out for a little bit, and we're gonna pause after the next two.
Okay. Student Showcase, Heartland Alternative Center.
All right. Tonight, we're proud to present, hi, and highlight, our Heartland High as our student showcase, with a special focus on the Wildland Firefighting Course with our Heartland students. This is the first year that Wildland Firefighting is available at Heartland. Uh, this is, this is a course that's made possible through our strong partnership with VROP, thank you. It helps bring real-world, career-focused learning to our students. To share more about this program, I'd like to welcome Heartland Principal Jonathan Farley, uh, VROP Superintendent Fabrizio Lefaro, and our wildfire firefighting students.
Thank you Superintendent Gomes. Members of the Board and members of the Cabinet, thank you for having us here tonight to present this program. Our showcase tonight highlights a Wildland firefighting program at Heartland High School, and as Mr. Gomes said, this is thanks to our district's partnership with Valley ROP. We have the Superintendent Fabrizio Lefaro here with us tonight. Um, it's interesting to see the leadership at Valley ROP have a similar goal that we do in Selma, unify the support of our school district and our superintendent with our, um, alternative, uh, education program, and the dedication they put to provide us the resources that we can desperately use for our students to prepare them for both college and careers. That is a focus that we have at Heartland, is to prepare our students for college and careers, and this program is unique in the sense that it can provide both a lifelong career in firefighting, or something that the students can work part-time or temporarily as they pursue college and other careers. At this time, I would like to welcome, uh, Mr. Garrison. He'll say a few words about the program as a whole, and then he'll introduce our teacher, Mr. Cooper. One of the things I find outstanding about the program that we have is how our students benefit from our instructors who have an entire career worth of experience in this program. Mr. Garrison is, uh, the ROP Fire Science Administrator, and he retired as a battalion chief after thirty years in the fire service.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for, uh, Mr. Farley for inviting me here tonight. I don't have a microphone voice, but bear with me. Um, so yeah, once again, my name is Tim Garrison. Um, I'm here to support, uh, Mr. Cooper. Um, he's, he'll introduce himself, so I'm not gonna go into that, but, um, I'm here to support him, but we do have a, a great program, uh, that offers not only Heartland, but also Selma Unified. We actually bring the kids over to Reedley College for the Wildland Fire Program, as well as you guys have the Urban Rural Fire Program, it focuses on the structural firefighting. Um, this year, it's kind of, it's rewarding for me, and I'm sure it's rewarding for Mr. Fabrizio there. Um, right now, we have ten students that have actually already been hot, offered jobs at Reedley College when they graduate. One's trying to leave a little bit earlier than graduation, we're trying to hold him back so he can enjoy his, uh, walking on the stage, but, um, he's actually gonna be a, right out of high school, going to hotshot crew, so he's actually one of our proteges, because it's not very common for them to go straight into hotshots, or usually on en-crawl crew or engines or whatever, but he's going straight to arrowhead hotshots, and he's pretty excited, so he wants to leave early, but we're trying to hold him back a little bit so he can enjoy his graduation. But yeah, so I'm, I'm not gonna get into it too much, but, um, we do offer all the programs for the Sitch Valley Schools, Wildland and Urban. Wildland is, uh, for the seniors, and Urban is for their junior year, and now that we have Heartland on board as well, um, I did teach a day for Mr. Cooper about a month ago, and I got to inter, uh, meet the kids, and good kids, you guys got some awesome kids at Heartland, and, and, uh, Mr. Farley does a good job with them as far as keeping them focused and engaged, and I think that program's gonna help them out, but it'll help the future kids out, as well as actually getting out and seeing that they can build that team, um, and get involved in the fire service. The cool thing about these kids, we get to go to, uh, Sequoia Lake with us in May, and we do an all-day trip up to Sequoia Lake, where they actually cut hand line and actually do the job that they're gonna do on a fire line. So with that being said, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Cooper, so he can come up and talk a little more about the program. He's got a slide presentation to go there.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, my name is, uh, David Cooper. Uh, I'm retired from the US Fire Service. I have, uh, forty-nine years in Wildland, uh, fire management of some type, and actually, counting this with, uh, start teaching this year, that would make it fifty, fifty years since I've, I have been involved in it. Uh, I grew up here locally. I grew up, I was raised, and I was born and raised in Saint, Saintor, and went to Reedley College, and then on to Cal Poly and Colorado State. Um, what is pretty interesting is, I, I also taught at, uh, Kings River Continuation School, and then now here at Heartland. These kids, these students, to me, put a little more effort into what to do in, into this, this training. And if we can go on with the, uh, uh, what's down with me is, is Fernando Flores, one of our, one of our students, and this is the official, uh, nomex pants, leather boots, and the, and the hard hat of, of a Wildland firefighter. The course that we, that, that we are, uh, going through is a national-recognized course. If a Wildland firefighter was to begin his service in Florida, New Mexico, Alaska, Montana, they would be doing this, the exact same course that we're teaching at, at, at Heartland. It's, uh, nine weeks, eight weeks, uh, uh, four field trips, like, uh, Mr. Chief Garrison talked about, uh, the two-day, uh, Reedley College, or it's the Tiger Romp, two days at Sequoia Camp, and then we did, uh, two field days already at, uh, at Reedley College. S-90 is our first course. It's the Wildland Fire Behavior, and this course, they, this is a, this is a tough course. Uh, it's, it's, it's aimed toward adults, and it's, uh, they learn about weather, they learn about fire weather, they learn to understand, uh, uh, situational awareness, paying attention to what goes on, on around them, and, uh, this class, this class averaged in ninety percent on their, on their final test on it. They did very, very, very well. Firefighter Training, this one actually gets into nitty-gritty of, uh, of actual being a Wildland firefighter. Uh, cover fire line suppression tactics, fire line construction, deployment of fire shelters, and, and the use of, of, of the hand tools. It's, uh, we just completed this course, uh, here this, uh, first of this week. Uh, Human Factors, uh, we completed this one yesterday. The course focused on situational awareness, leadership skills. It focuses on learning from what we do. Uh, each of our, our, our exercises at, at Reedley, we did what we call after, an AAR, After Action Review, and again, that's what this course focuses on. FEMA, this is FEMA one hundred, this was the first course that they, that they took. These, uh, again, this actual class is online class that we walk through, uh, teaches them about the incident command structure, uh, required class, and any kind of incident management in the United States that requires this class. Uh, along with introduction to National Incident Management System, uh, the IS seven, seven hundred. Out of twelve of the FEMA one hundred, I've had ten, or eleven completions, and I've, I'm up to eight completions on, uh, S-seven-hundred so far. So at the entry level, it'd be, uh, of, of what we call a firefighter two, forestry technician, uh, usually start on an engine crew, or a hand crew member, heli-tac crew. They, uh, with the final goal to, uh, and with that is, is, uh, one of the biggest hot, uh, employers is the US Forest Service, but then also BLM and the, and National Park Service is, is, is some of those keys. And many of these, after they have one or two years of experience in either engine crew or hand crew, they go on to, uh, Chief Garrison mentioned, uh, hotshot crew, and that, uh, uh, and then along with that, also, after a few years, they, there's been looking at, uh, Cal Fire hires quite a few people from, uh, this experience through the Forest Service, and then also PGD has fire crews, and then, then we have quite a few contract crews now that are building up throughout, throughout the state. And if many, if many of you, you know, we just experienced, uh, unpresented fires in Southern California, and one of the consistent issues that was on that fire was not enough firefighters, and that, this has been an issue for the last ten, ten years, and this program will, is, is gonna help to, to develop that and, and improve it. Uh, this here's a shelter, fire shelter, uh, exercise, students went through. They, uh, one of the additional things is, they learn how to u, uh, maintain, oper, and operate chainsaws. This is hand line construction. This is hand line construction. They, uh, one of the things I've seen with this class and the other class too is it, and it develops and improves their self-confidence, especially with using the hand tools out in the field and, 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 and the chainsaws.
Well, thank you again to Mr. Cooper, and thank you very much to Fernando for being here tonight. It's not easy to come here, uh, and demonstrate our, our uniform and the power of the program. Um, I, I do want to say the impact that I've seen that this has had on campus, and we talked about what's seen at other campuses and throughout the valley, but we've actually had a student who came to our program this year in the fall and said that she knew about of this Wildland firefighting program, knew that we were starting it, and her brother had gone through it, and he had a successful career in Wildland firefighting. And so it actually is something that is well-known, and it really makes education and learning and attending school real, and gives a, a real benefit that students can easily recognize. A lot of times we talk about get your diploma, and what does that mean after that? This really makes a real connection for them, that it has really expanded throughout our campus in terms of student enthusiasm across the board for both college and careers. So again, thank you to Valley ROP, and thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Any, any comments or from the board?
Looks like you have a very good program, and being that we live where we do, we definitely need young people going in that field.
Yeah, great job. It's fantastic. Okay. Honoring the Selma High School Boys and Girls Wrestling Team.
All right. Tonight we're thrilled to recognize the Selma High School Boys and Girls Wrestling Team for their incredible season and the dedication they've shown on and off the mat. Wrestling has a rich tradition here in Selma, and this season our athletes demonstrated the skill, determination, and resilience that define our program. With state qualifiers among our ranks, our wrestlers have competed at the highest level, proudly representing Selma High and bringing our wrestling program back to a position of great strength. Their success is a testament to their hard work, the support of their coaches, and the commitment of the athletic program to excellence. To introduce our coaches and student athletes, please join me in welcoming Athletic Director Randy Israelean.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. Thank you board and cabinet for recognizing some of our student athletes. Next meeting, we'll get to, uh, in, introduce ourselves to our two-section championship soccer teams. It's been a fantastic winter, a, a really, really extended winter. I'm sure you've heard a little bit of the noise out there with our, our, uh, our six extra soccer games, and, uh, tonight we're gonna talk a little bit and introduce you to six of our nine state qualifiers. Um, obviously, uh, to get to that point, to be a state qualifier takes a tremendous amount of, of work and, and technical abilities. Um, I will tell you that, uh, Mr. Gomes and myself got to watch them at the Masters at Cellar Arena. Um, in that hour and a half or two hours, we watched, uh, at least six of our wrestlers compete, and, uh, I think all but one, uh, won their matches at that particular time in the, on a Saturday morning, so they wrestled really well in our Masters meet, which is our section meet, um, and then went on to the state. I'm gonna let Coach Mendoza and Escalera, who have been part of Selma Wrestling for over twenty years, they've seen our program grow, they've seen our program at the highest peak that it's been, and then they've seen us go through a little bit of a rebuild. Um, Coach Mendoza i- is gonna speak on behalf of the boys and, and their progress, how they got to the state level, and then Coach Escalera will, will, uh, introduce the girls and, and talk a little bit about them. But again, thanks for having us, and, uh, and I'm gonna turn it over to Coach Mendoza.
Good evening. Uh, thank you guys for having us. Um, please excuse my, my attire. We started training for next season, uh, that Monday after state, so we're three hundred and fifty days out right now, and, and we're already looking forward to building on, uh, what we've gone, uh, done so far. Um, so this year we had five, uh, uh, state qualifiers on the boy side. Uh, wrestling is one of the few, uh, sports, uh, in the state that is one division. That means we compete against big schools, small school, fall schools. Um, over about nine hundred something schools in the state have wrestling, and over two hundred represented at the state meet. Um, we finished around eighty-ninth, which is on the lower end from what we're used to, but, um, the focus that we're, that I, that I wanna emphasize on is, um, getting these kids ready for the next level, and then, um, hope, hope, encourage them to continue wrestling and pursue an education and, and, and earn a degree. Um, so I just wanna talk about a little, uh, about our qualifiers real quick. Um, our first one that's here is Caleb Cisneros. Caleb Cisneros is a freshman this year. Um, he had a, a great season. Um, we battled a little bit of injuries, and, um, he was able to qualify to state as, as a freshman, and now he feels, um, ready to go out there and place, uh, next season. Uh, our second state qualifier is Davious Gutierrez. Uh, he's one of our seniors. Um, he has, um, had adversity with injuries and things like that, but, uh, I was happy to see him finish, uh, finish off his senior year. Um, uh, and then again, as a senior, I, I, I encourage him to continue, uh, moving forward and wrestling and getting a degree. Uh, next is his younger brother, Manuel Gutierrez. Manuel Gutierrez is a sophomore. Um, again, kinda only had a little bit of a season and was able to qualify to state. Um, he got really motivated towards the end, improved his grades a lot, and, and he's, he was a perfect example of like, sports, uh, really helps to motivate to getting schoolwork done. Um, Manuel's really, uh, he used this experience this year to, to, uh, hopefully try to get on that podium next year. Um, and then our last one here today is, uh, Daniel Armandares. He's a senior. He was a, uh, two-time state qualifier, um, battled hard, dealt with a lot of injuries this season, and that's kind of one of the things that we kinda have to work through and motivate our wrestlers to push through. Um, and he had a heck of a season. Um, again, as a senior, I, I wanna encourage him to continue and look to get a, a degree. And then, um, our last qualifier who's not here is Jacob Hernandez. He is also a senior, two-time state qualifier. Um, and again, uh, he's got a little more options. He's a multi-sport athlete, so he's doing baseball right now, so that's why he couldn't be here. But, um, you know, he'll look to, to move, move on to the next level and, um, hopefully get his college degree, um, like his older brothers before, or his older brother and his older sister before him. Um, like, like Coach, uh, like Israelean said, I've been around for a long time. Um, I've known a lot of these kids since they were like six, seven years old, so it's really easy to work with them once they're at this level, and, and we have built that trust, so, um, we're working forward to, to getting them to the next level, and, um, same with the boys, or same with the girls, and I'll let, uh, Coach Escalera touch up, uh, talk more about that.
Uh, good evening. I'm, uh, Ernie Escalera, head coach of the girl, women's girls, girls wrestling. Uh, we had four qualifiers this year. Uh, Kaylee Salazar, Juliana Alvarez, and Chloe Furlong, and her sister Olivia Furlong. Uh, Chloe, uh, Furlong was one of our freshmen. Uh, she qualified, uh, uh, like Randy said, that's, it's really hard to qualify in the Central Valley for this, this tournament. Uh, people don't realize there is no, there's, it's, there is no division here. It's, uh, one big melting pot. Every school, every school in the California shows up at that tournament. So this year we actually had, we normally have top four qualifiers, uh, they gave us one because of our section's so tough. Uh, she placed, uh, she placed top eight at, at our divisionals, and, uh, at the, at the Masters. Um, it's really hard for a freshman to, to make that, to make the, to next, to the state tournament, and she actually qualified, which is very rare for a freshman at this level. And we have Juliana Alvarez, uh, she's a two-time, uh, state qualifier. She's not here today. Uh, she, uh, she ended up finishing at the state tournament, top twelve. Uh, she, uh, she lost in the blood rounds, but that's, uh, top twelve in the state. And we have Kaylee Salazar, which is, uh, one of, uh, a very amazing, uh, individual. Uh, she is one of the toughest, uh, I've been doing this for over thirty years, and, uh, I've never seen anybody as tough as, uh, as she has. She, uh, she had an injury early in the season, uh, which normally would, uh, sideline her for the rest of the season, and I still don't understand how she still got herself together with her parents, and I put her back together, and she showed up and started, uh, practicing. And, uh, she qualified for state, and again, she, uh, the blood rounds, top twelve in the state, finished, so we're very proud of her. And, uh, we have Olivia, uh, Furlong, which is, uh, she's not here today because she is on a recruiting trip, uh, so she was not here. She, another, my one-seventy-pounder, uh, she did a really, had a really great season. Uh, some of the highlights she did, we went down to Southern Sections in our tournaments, and she faced a girl down there that was sixth in the nation, and, uh, she went out there and beat her. So, it's a really tough girl, it's really, wow, really tough. It's, uh, I can't keep it together here, but very proud of these girls. Um, we, we placed, uh, top five in our Masters. Uh, a lot, we normally have, we have, normally have a lot more qualifying, but we were hit with a lot of injuries this year for whatever reason, and, uh, but we're still proud of them. And like I said, I've been here for over thirty years. I, I coached, uh, Coach Pepe back when he was six, seven years old, so probably one of the oldest coaches out here right now, but, um, we are, we are getting this program back to where it used to be, uh, but, uh, thank you very much, Fer.
Any questions, comments?
Good job, Oliver, especially the girls. Don't mess with the girls.
I wouldn't mess with any of them, right?
Yeah, I wanna say thank you, guys. I was out there that Saturday with Randy, and, uh, boy, can they wrestle. Uh, you are right, anyone in California can and will be there, and you guys did a fantastic job. Way to go, guys. Really proud of you. So, we're gonna pause here for a little bit. We have some sweets, and, uh, hopefully you guys can eat some of your wrestlers, but, you know, a little cookie, you guys deserve it, and some drinks. Uh, avid students, uh, uh, Heartland folks, um, we're gonna pause, and you guys can get some cookies and some pictures.
Take a break.
At Selma Unified, we're more than a school district.
We are a community united in our commitment to every student's success.
We provide a nurturing environment where students thrive academically and socially.
From innovative instruction to valuable enrichment programs, we offer-
A wide range of opportunities for every student to excel.
We inspire minds and shape futures.
Together we are.
Together-
We are Selma Unified.
We are Selma Unified.
Together we are Selma Unified.
Raquel, are you ready?
Yes, now I'm ready, thank you.
We'll wait, we'll, we'll wait. Oh, was it?
Wow. You said-
That was overboard.
All right, guys. That's awesome. Moving on, Ed Services. No, am I in the right spot? Yeah. Ed Services, suspension and expulsion data presentation by David Dr. Deal.
Yes, thank you. I would like to invite Dr. David Deal up to the podium to present on our current suspension and expulsion data.
Good evening, Board, uh, Board President, not Acting Board President-
Just a guy.
Just, just a guy. Just a guy. Acting Board President, Joel Fodor and Board Cabinet, good evening. Certainly not as, uh, exciting as the, the wrestling team or the Wildland Firefighters. I apologize, but we are going to do the presentation on suspension and expulsions. There we go. So, oh, I have a word moved over. That intervention is supposed to be over on the other, other side there. But discipline, um, and intervention, so discipline, a student can be suspended or expelled for, um, really any major violation that occurs on school grounds or when a student's going to or from school. And all of those violations are listed in the education code. So again, and I say major violation, so, um, not, not minor violations, not minor infractions, those are not suspendable. Um, and they are all, um, listed in the ed code. There's about 20 violations under 48900 and 48915. On the intervention side, the intent of the legislature, legislature as, as is the intent of the school district is really to reduce suspensions and utilize other means of correction through multi-tiered systems of support, restorative practices, and through a trauma-informed lens. In alignment to the strategic plan, as we are trying to, um, reduce our suspensions and expulsions and decrease that by two and a half percent annually. Goal two of the, um, strategic plan under social and emotional well-being, climate and culture. I will go over the, the suspensions and the expulsions and I think you're, you'll see that we have by and large met our goal of reducing suspensions significantly and, um, we'll talk to expulsions, which, um, my clicker's just not hitting it today. Sorry. There we go. We'll talk, um, through the elementary and the secondary. We'll separate them and we've done this looking back all the way to the 2018, 2019 school year. So it's pre-COVID and we're looking in the August to March. So we're comparing apples to apples. So August to March of each one of these years. And we are not looking at the year of COVID of the 2021 school year. So you'll notice that that school year is not counted in the data that we're reviewing since we really didn't have kids on campus in the typical fashion. So, um, looking at suspensions and expulsions, going back to pre-COVID, 2018, 2019, and then 2019, 20, which as you'll recall, in 2020 of March is when the COVID shutdown was. In 2018, we had 161 suspensions and then it trickles down. 347 suspensions in the 2018, 19 school year. 244. Then we were up to 255 post-COVID, 299, and then down to 100. And my eyes are bad, but I want to say that's 168. Thank you. Thank, thanks there for the young eyes. Expulsions, last year, looking at, in, in last year, we had, um, three. Previous year to that, 11. Then as you can see, we had that high year of 20, then 11, and then three back in the other year. And there's sometimes not a correlation. Sometimes we'll be very high in suspensions and then low in expulsions. And then other years, the other way around. So this year between, in the, the August to, um, March, we've had five expulsions, but we've been very low in our suspensions. In our elementary, you can see what our top violations are. They tend to be, and this has been constant going back to 2018. So, um, pre-COVID, post-COVID, our, our number, our highest violation is attempted to cause physical injury. What that violation is, is typically kids having a scuffle or kids fighting. The other, almost all of the other three violations, uh, that would be in the top four that get listed, that are really still very low are engaged in sexual harassment, tobacco, and then controlled substances. We were a little, a lower last year at 38 and then we spiked up this year in the physical altercations of 76.
And that's in elementary, that's up-
That's, that's an elementary, yeah. And then again, if you go back and you look at 2018, 2019, there was 74. So it, sometimes you just have a high year, then it'll go down and then it goes up and there's not always, um, there's not always a reason to point to. It's just, you just might have one of those years where there's just been a little bit more physical activity between the kids. But on the good news is you go into the secondary and we go back to 2018, 2019, we are in the high of 134. It starts to reduce. We spiked last year and had a 123 and then we were down significantly this year to 68. So we trended way down at the secondary level. Secondary, of course, includes, um, Heartland. That's, uh, you know, continuation school, Heartland, Strive, um, the Strive kids that are at the secondary level and ALMS and our high school kids. So the violation of created a hostile environment, that's kind of a unique title, but what that typically would be is most likely, um, kids getting riled up and probably almost getting ready to fight, but not quite fighting. And then that gets tagged as quote unquote, created a hostile environment. So you could almost, you could almost throw it into the about to fight category. And then we have the drug paraphernalia and then you have the controlled substance. And so those two violations almost go hand in hand themselves. So the top two link together and the bottom two link together. Um, again, we're down, we're pretty low, uh, this year, 24 controlled substance violations and 32 paraphernalia violations. So down from last year in controlled substance from 79 to 24. That's a significant decrease. So significant decrease in drug violations and a significant decrease in fighting. We'd like to attribute that to the fact that we've, of course, we have a number of, of interventions that we use that, um, I won't read them all to you, but one of the things we've pushed out this year is, um, we're, we're a higher use of our substance abuse campaign with, um, our prodigy partners. Of course, we, you know, working with our mental health clinicians and social, social workers as well, but we introduced the seven challenges program that the social workers and mental health therapists have been using. Um, we've also pushed out the anti-bullying campaign at the, at all of our schools. So in, with the seven challenges, the prodigy, um, and the anti-bullying campaign, that we see the, we'd like to see that's a connection to the reduction in the physical aggression and the fighting and the substance abuse. Um, I will pause for any questions. I would like to turn it over to Mr. Lane to allow him to talk to some of the positive things going on. And then I can take any questions, um, after he speaks or we can take questions together.
I, I understand.
Or if you'd like me to, uh, Mr. Gomes, I can take questions now and then let Mr. Lane speak.
Any questions now?
Okay, okay.
Okay. I had, um, my, my thought is you have the statistics. Do you have any statistics on, um, with all these things that you help them with, uh, the intervention, what they're doing at the schools to help students? Do you have any information or data that says, that comes out of what, why is happening or, or, you know, or is that even a possibility?
Yeah, that's a good question. So some of the information that clinicians get or social workers get or our prodigy, um, who are mental health therapists, social workers get, they cannot necessarily divulge all the information. They can probably give us more generalities, um, and they do collect that information, but I do, I, I do not have that information. But, but at the end of the year, we do get the feedback as to what the trends are. We know that kids are, you know, it's, it's not necessarily any different in Selma than it probably is throughout California. Kids are self-medicating. There's, there's other mental health issues that go in line. Some kids are experimenting. Some kids have issues at home and some kids have what we call a dual diagnosis is that there's another coexisting disorder in, going along with their substance abuse issue and they need further support.
We could get case numbers, like, uh, case numbers of prodigy. Prodigy's a county service that provides substance abuse, uh, support for our students and you can see case numbers, that could be it, but you, yeah, you can't get the specifics, of course.
No, no, I was just wondering if it, in generalities, you know, I, I know that that's, you know, very, um, how do I say, sensitive information. Uh, so, but I was just curious, so, so you know how to handle it? Do we have any proactive programs?
So if they were seeing things, if they said that, gosh, we're seeing a spike in a lot of cases of depression, then we know that we need to address issues around depression. But they can't say which kids, but we, we would know those trends, yes.
Okay.
I have just some clarifying questions. Slide number eight, that's a long one, yes. So, um, is PBIS alive and well in all of our school sites?
Slide-
PBIS. I, I see school-wide PBIS support. I know before it could not, we couldn't even say PBIS. I'm a supporter of PBIS. I think it's great to have on our school sites, but is it alive and well in all of our schools?
I would say it's in varying degrees. It's used and there's different frameworks of how people are using the positive behavior intervention systems. Yes, every school is pushing it, pushing it out, but I agree, I think some people are calling it some, um, a different type of intervention. But the intervention support system, the tiered interventions at different levels, tier one, tier two, tier three, is, is occurring at every, at every school site, yes.
And just clarification on this, on the slides here. So the supports that are provided for high school are specific for the high school, middle school, and elementary. So my question, um, are there direct mental health supports for the elementary school if needed?
There are direct mental health supports at every school site, yes. We have a mental health clinician. We have direct mental health clinician support at every school site is available. There is a clinician assigned to every school site. Some school sites, um, there's not one there every hour of the day, obviously, because we spread seven of them out over the 10 schools, but that support is available to, at every site.
Thank you. I just, um, because I see the uptick in our, uh, elementary, you know, compared to 2018, 2019, um, but other than that, it's, you know, great to see that our numbers are down overall.
And to, to add a little bit more context with the question on PBIS, um, we do have, for example, uh, school-wide expectations that are still alive and well. That's a, um, an outcome of our training through PBIS. Um, some expectations, like even the dining hall, you'll see has expectations, um, very similar to that. School-wide incentives, um, are also alive and well in all of our schools. And so there are still components of, uh, PBIS that we continue to, to use at our school sites.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Lane.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. Um, when we talk about suspensions and expulsions, um, I'm going to take a little bit of a different view of this and, and how we reduce those. And, and to me, there's, there's, there's a few ways you do this. The first one is clarity. And, and by that I mean, every student on the Selma High School campus knows exactly what actions would result in what consequence. Uh, we cover that upfront on sophomore, junior, senior. The freshmen, uh, still, you, you know, you've dealt a lot with the middle school age. So that is a little bit more heavy on the rules, um, and, and what that looks like here at Selma High School, our expectations. And then you get to the seniors and you talk more about activities when they get to that age, we see a lot less, um, discipline. But it's real, it, it's clarity on what's acceptable and what's not, and it's accountability. And then we go into school culture. And what I mean by school culture is how do we treat each other at Selma High School? What are our school norms? What is acceptable, what's not acceptable? Now, each classroom is a little bit different, right? Each teacher is different and they have their own style, but then we have universal behavioral objectives, Selma High School. Like your cell phone shouldn't be out in your room. Um, beyond that, how do we, how do we treat, how do we greet each other? Uh, when students come onto campus, we take great pride in greeting them with extreme enthusiasm. Hello, good morning. Even if we get the cold shoulder today, I had, uh, two students and they, I usually get the cold shoulder every morning when I get good morning, but at the end of the day, they told me to have a good evening and I took that as, as a huge victory. Uh, and it's not just, it's universal across the campus. In addition to that, we have five campus security officers. We strategically place them around the campus. So when you come out to use the restroom, um, the chances of you seeing an adult within the first 10 seconds is very high. We greet you, we encourage you to go do what you need to do and then, and then to get back to class, uh, in a timely fashion, so you don't miss too many instructional minutes. And it's a shared responsibility when we're talking about these things. Uh, as the adults, we have to embody what we expect from the students. We have to exemplify that. Um, and that's what we do. And then when you get these school norms and, and probably the most important part of this is building connections. Uh, you saw Jennifer Mantle here this evening with the avid students. Um, she's amazing at building connections, as is, um, virtually our entire staff. When you build these connections, real authentic, genuine connections, students tend to not want to let you down as the adult. And when students don't want to let you down with misbehavior, that is way more powerful than any suspension or any consequence they'll ever face. Uh, now that takes time and energy, but if you're willing to expend that, then that's the net result. You can change, uh, the school culture. In terms of PBIS or our positive incentives, um, we brought that bear bucks, which sounds like it's, it's something more in elementary or middle school. Our kids love them. Um, each teacher gets a certain allotment of bear bucks. You get them for doing, could be doing good on assignment, could be being a good citizen. I hand them out when I see students pick up trash that isn't their own. Then on every other Friday, we have the bear bucks, the student store. We have hundreds of kids line up and they're enthusiastic about it. Uh, today I had a, a large group of students and there was a, a large amount of trash on the ground. And so I was picking some up from the table and I said, hey, guys, I know that wasn't your trash, you would never do that, but if you wouldn't mind picking up for me, I'd greatly appreciate it. Maybe just one or two pieces. So they picked it all up and then they told me that they deserve some bear bucks, which I said, maybe you do, I don't have any on me. But it's just little things, um, like that. We also have positive referrals. Our teachers nominate students for positive referrals. You did something positive in class, could be behaviorally, could be academically, or the two worlds meshed together. I physically go out to the classroom, because I found when I called them in, it's a five-minute walk, a five-minute conversation, took too much time. So I go out to the classroom, it could be Joel Fodor, uh, but, you know, Joel, can you come outside? You've done something great. I spend a minute to two minutes reading what the teacher said about you. I congratulate you. I encourage you to keep it up and thank you for making Selma High School a great place. It is really impactful, um, and, and I'll be honest, it's some of the highlights of my day. And the last thing we've instituted this year is our Core Four, work ethic, integrity, perseverance, and accountability. Kind of covers the whole gamut. Um, we just had another Core Four breakfast. We had 49 new students. Um, we had shirts developed by a teacher here on campus. Aaron Nino's Bear Prince then produces the shirts and I get to call them in and hand out this shirt. And I make sure I tell the student, the only way you get this shirt is you earn it, you can't buy it, there's no other way to get it. So when you see this walking around, it means, see somebody wearing this walking around, it means that they earned the right to wear that. So that's, that's the tact that we take, is to try to create this school culture where, hey, this is what we do and this is how we do it. And then it, it helps to discourage that behavior, so you don't have to get to the suspension and expulsion end of it. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Go Bears. I love, it's fantastic. I love it. I know that day you and I were walking across campus and, uh, I was at, we were talking about, uh, how kids get to school and you, or how do they get in class or what do you say? And you told me, and I, I mean, I was taken aback.
Yeah.
I was impressed. And I think I told you, I said, if somebody would have talked to me like that when I was in high school, maybe I would have gone more, right?
Yeah, we, we, we talk, you know, be on time, right? Because, uh, don't be late. No, no, no. Hey, be on time, be on time. And you'll see maybe 10 kids pick up their pace. I'm not going to mislead you that every high school kid starts, you know? But they'll be like, oh man, Mr. Lane's going to come talk to me. I'd rather just get to class. Like, just let, just let me go. And, and so we do those things or if students are late, you know, I'll tell them, hey, you know, you cheated me out of four minutes with you today, so it made my day four minutes less, as good as it could have been. And then, you know, the next day after they're on time, you bring it up. And so, um, I know Mr. Gomes has been on campus at lunch and it's, um, it's just a nice feeling. I know my admin team gets after me when I tell them, hey, we've had about two fights in the last four or five months. Like, don't say that. I'm like, I'm not naive. I know these things can happen, but it's not by accident. It's a cultural thing and then it's being really active and vigilant when you're on supervision. So, um, anyways. And then it's being really active and vigilant when you're on supervision. So anyways, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I appreciate. I wish some of our students would have stayed and they could have kind of echoed these sentiments, but they may have had better things to do. I don't know. But thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it for that one? Moving on to number two, the approval request of portable stage purchase, visual and performing arts.
Yes, thank you. So as you know, we've expanded our performing arts programs. The program is proposing the purchase of a modular stage. You're receiving the pictures now of that stage that can be expanded with additional sections if necessary. This stage would enable us to transform any large room or any outdoor area into a performance venue, benefiting all of our secondary performance arts programs. The arts department has had to rent stages as there are limited suitable venues within our district to accommodate large performances. Over the past three semesters, renting a stage and lighting has cost approximately $110,000 for the middle school and the high school. If approved, this request of a little over $96,000 would be paid out of Proposition 98 funds, or sorry, 28 funds. And as you know, this fund is really intended to purchase these items to build our growing arts program.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Well, I know I asked a little bit earlier, but you had some, from what you told me, you had some other bids. Why was this one the one that you handed on?
It really comes back down to return on investment and that this company really stands behind the work that they do. I actually do have Mr. Alex Lima who is here. If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and maybe sharing your process on how you selected this proposal or this stage as an option.
While he's going, all of these is one thing or are we just?
All is one.
They all do the different things?
Yes, and that's the power in this stage. You know, we could go with a cheaper one. We could go with another version. But the beautiful thing about this is not only is it high quality and durable, and we've had stages from this company in the past that really lasted a really long time, over 20 years. But also, the benefit is that you, it's a modular that you can change into different formats. And so just the power in that is because we have different venues and we have different needs. And so it allows us to be able to be flexible with that. Is there anything else that you would like to add to the process of selecting the stage?
Sure. Good evening. You know, when we started this process, we were expending a huge portion of our budget on renting these stages. Now, that six-figure number that you heard just a moment ago was not for the performing arts. That was specifically just for folklore to go over the last three semesters. And those stages, we got to use them for one performance. They got packed up and we never got to see them again until we rented another stage. We decided that regardless of what stage we did purchase, we really needed to purchase a stage. In the long run, it's going to save us a lot of money. We looked at a lot of different types, styles, setups. There are stages that have fold-out legs, like a folding table. There are stages that have telescoping legs for various heights. There are, there's just a lot of different types of setups, different sized panels for the floors. The biggest thing that we had to take into consideration is the fact that people are going to be dancing on this stage. You're going to have 30, 40 people moving in sync on top of a stage. And that's a lot of weight. That's a lot of movement. That's a lot of pressure, a lot of force. It's not just any piece of equipment that can handle that. So we looked at the various types. We narrowed it down to three. We looked at pricing. The Wanger option was kind of the middle-of-the-road price. And it doesn't offer quite as much functionality in terms of like height of legs and that kind of thing. But it's an incredibly sturdy product. And of all of the factors that we took into account, having a sturdy known quantity was far more important than really almost anything else. It does us no good to spend $80,000 on a stage that the group that needs it the most will never be able to use because it doesn't, it won't hold them. We also really liked the Wanger option because Wanger is very consistent with their design. What they designed this year is what they're going to be selling next year, is what they're going to be selling 10 years from now, is what they're going to be selling in 20 years. If you need a bigger stage, you just have to order a couple more pieces and you're good to go. If something breaks, you call them up and the same part that you could buy 10 years ago is the part they're going to ship to you today. And so we just felt like it was the best option to go with.
So that brings up an interesting question. Warranty. Is there a warranty on this? Because there'll be a lot of take-down, put-up, take-down, put-up, and a lot of stress on the boards. For spending that much money, if it has a part that breaks on it, are they going to take care of that for us?
We can definitely look into that. I don't know if this necessarily includes the warranty. And if it does, you know, we can find out how long that warranty would be.
I do know that, if I'm not mistaken, if I remember correctly on the quote, it says that there's a standard warranty. I don't remember what the standard warranty is, but I do believe that it covers issues in production. I mean, obviously, if you're, if you use something, a warranty typically doesn't cover normal wear and tear. That's just part of using something.
I'm talking more like if we, because a lot of stuff will have legs and interconnects. If we take an interconnect out and it just bends because it was a good, for some reason, that one didn't pass quality control. That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, in the past, and we actually have a Wanger library system in the band room and we have Wanger lockers. And when we got those, they covered issues with production, yeah. If something didn't pass quality control and somehow made it to us, they were pretty good about that kind of thing. Not that we've ever had a problem with anything that we've ever ordered from them.
And what, did you say that the length of time that it would approximately last? You said there was something like 20 years or so or?
Well, I do believe the Wanger setup that they had in the choir room before we bought actual choir risers for the choir room, I believe that was in there for like 10, 15 years.
And then on top of that, that's the one that we're using for graduation. So it's still living on in other formats and it has, so that's, I think, Marty, we said about 15 years. And so it really is a good product.
So we have a good track record with it.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And nobody opposed?
Thank you.
Cool. All right, my favorite. Facilities. Number one, Durham Construction Change Order number one for the maintenance and operation building complex project.
Good evening. I have our facilities director, Steve Fucy, to present on this item.
Good evening, everyone. We're bringing to you tonight a change order for Durham Construction. And this has to do with the new MOT shop and office buildings over at Transportation. When we moved the buildings in, the exterior walls had some dry rot on them. And when they opened them up, they found some mold and different things on the interior. So we ended up replacing the exterior walls, the insulation, and the tack board on the inside. And also, some of the metal had some rusting on it. So they went in and cleaned up all the metal and the rusting and repainted everything. And we were just over there today and they looked fantastic. And then we also have, there was a mishap in the blueprints. When we went out to bid, one of the sections got left out for the electrical. And to finish the first part of the project, they have to do the flatwork, which is the concrete in front of the shop. So without having to pour that, rip it up, to put the conduits in the ground to run power, data, et cetera, to all the buildings, we went ahead and opened that up with the trenches to get that ready so that when they perform the flatwork on top of it, we don't have to come back and redo anything or destroy what was just put in there. So one, two, and three were unforeseen. And on change order number six, that was just an error. When the architect took the drawings out to bid, it left out the electrical portion on that. So what we're wanting to do is close out this first phase of this project in order to proceed with the electrical project, which we'd have to bring back to you. Once we get this wrapped up, we just have to get it signed off to close out this contractor and then we can start up the second portion of it.
Okay, so I got a couple of questions.
Yes.
So I can understand the mold, the dry rot and all that. That's a unforeseen thing. But the leaving out of the blueprint, who dropped the ball?
When the architect sent the blueprints out to bid, he grabbed the wrong set. So the ones that went out did not include the electrical.
So is the architect's firm going to provide some remediation for that?
We've been working, we have Mr. Mock here this evening. We've been working with him. So part of the, so our budget was set at 1.5 million. And with the work that's being done and what still needs to be done, we're looking good to be under budget on that. There will be a little bit of difference in cost from what was six months ago versus today. But yes, we are working with the architect to iron all the details out of who's going to cover what on that.
I have a question on that as well because I have a concern that someone did not catch that. Someone that, from anybody, from our staff to the architect.
Well, it was caught.
It almost looks like, from a bidding perspective, it looks like it was omitted in order to get a bid. So that's what it looks like.
So the bid docs were sent out and it was caught after the docs had already been published. And due to the bid process, that's why we have to do it in a second stage.
So is, are we going to get something for that?
Like I say, we're working with them to discuss all the options that we have there to work out. Because there's a lot of variations that are in there. One is time, you know, not being there, occupying other buildings that have other uses waiting for us. There's a lot of things for us to discuss and work out with the architect, yes.
And again, we do have Alan Mock, the architect, here if you have specific questions that you'd like him to answer. But we are working with him to figure out which piece is our responsibility. Because yes, to your point, although the architect does release the plans, the district has a level of responsibility to verify these things when we do post for bidding. So although the architect omitted this part of the scope of work, you know, there are things we could have done on our end, which we are improving and taking steps to avoid that in the future. But once we get through this piece, we will be looking at how much the cost is, how much the architect is responsible for, and then we'll bring that over, bring that back to the district for approval. I mean, the board, sorry.
Right, because they're not, they wouldn't, obviously, they wouldn't be responsible for the entire cost of it because had it been in there, it would have been included in our original bid.
Exactly. You have to understand that we would have paid for the electrical portion as part of the project had it been included. And that's what Mr. Fucy is referring to, is that we had that in the budget. And so the cost would have been the district's responsibility either way. Some of the things that we could look at for recouping some of that cost is maybe looking at had, you know, the savings we could have done by bidding it all together versus having to rebid it separately down the line where contractors might be a little bit busier and their prices might have gone up. So we could look at different things like that. And also, some of the things we're having to do in lieu of moving in sooner. There's different things to look at and we're taking that into consideration. And Mr. Mock has been working with us and trying to figure out what that would look like in a proposal.
So with the omission of it, are you saying that whatever we were going to pay, we were going to pay whether it was omitted?
Yes. So there, and I'm sure Mr. Fucy can elaborate, but there's a difference between errors and omissions when it relates to an architect. And so I'll just pass it over to Steve. He'll do a much better job.
So the electrical was intended to be part of it, even though that section got left out. So if it was $45,000 and now it's going to cost us $48,000, we would have still had to consider taking in that $45,000 for the materials or whatnot to proceed. So the difference of what we have is what we're going to have to negotiate and work out.
So the only true hard cost at this point, in terms of what we can tell is, should not have occurred at all, would be the cost to re send it out for a second bid or, I'm a little confused on that.
No, so because of the cost of the equipment is pretty high and when you include the equipment and the labor per the bid codes, we will have to go out for formal bid again so we don't disqualify ourselves from proper bidding procedures.
So that formal bid process is really the hard cost that would never have occurred had that.
It's the delay. It's actually the delay in the project. So now we weren't able to do it at the front end with the entire scope of the project. So now we're having to delay it by the time we get the plans, go out to bid, advertise, do all the things, draw block. It's just delaying when the project would be and that's where the increase in cost could come.
So, yeah, increase in cost, increase in time. We now can't use the building. We have to find something else to use in the meantime, that type of deal.
So there's no clear picture at this point?
Exactly. It's a little early to tell exactly what the end result is. So that's why we're not bringing that piece to you at the moment. We're just hoping to close out this piece of the project, this phase of the project and move forward with the electrical piece. We will bring it back to you, to the board for approval on how that would end up. But rest assured, we are working with the architect to come up with the reasonable amount of responsibility.
And a decent amount of the conduits and stuff we're running underground now are already in this cost. So that will subtract also from what we will bring back when we run into the entire electrical part of it.
Okay. Okay, any more questions or? Okay, so then do we have a motion to approve change order number one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Make a motion? Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed?
No.
Okay, we have three a's and one nay. Moving on. Number two, Marco Construction.
So our second proposal tonight is for Marco Construction. This is a district-initiated change order in Phase One of the window project at Terry Elementary. They put in light windows from the countertops up to the ceilings. And once we put those in, we had feedback that the teachers didn't have enough wall space. They also wanted window coverings and people could see in and everything else. So we met with Jessica and our architects and kind of went over some options there. So what they're wanting was costing us near the amount that it's going to cost us to put these windows up. So what we're proposing is infilling the walls after we remove the windows, put the studs in, insulate it, put sheet rock and texture on the inside and plaster the outside so it matches the building with the light texture. And so this is just giving them exactly what they were looking for compared to the first round that we did when the windows weren't what teachers actually wanted. So we had to go in and put some coverings in and now we're trying to give them a wall space as well.
Okay, so I, so I understand this because it's a little confusing. So we had these plans. People signed off on it. Everyone was good with it. We built it. And now that it's built, a group of people say, hey, we want more wall space. So can you get rid of the windows? Am I understanding that? What am I missing here?
So there's two phases. Terry Elementary had the kindergarten Phase One. And at that point, when that piece was completed, we got the feedback from the principal at the time and the teachers that it would have been better to have less windows, more wall space. So we're leaving that one as is, but we have a second phase for Terry Elementary. And for the second phase, we will incorporate those changes to have less window and more wall space. So we're not changing the first phase of it. We're moving forward with the feedback.
Then why is it costing more? Wouldn't it be cheaper if we had less windows?
You would think that, but we also have to do the stucco and everything on the exterior. I thought the same thing. And although the windows are very costly, we did have, they did deduct the savings, but there is still a cost for that.
So the existing windows have metal frames, of course, that hold the windows in place. So they have to demo all that out and then they got to build studs in there and infill the wall with studs and then stucco the outside, then they'll insulate it and then they'll sheet rock on the inside. So you have demo labor, which is going to be more than just removing windows because they now have to take out part of the wall or most of the wall and then rebuild it to put this top layer of windows in. So that's where the cost comes in.
So if we... So if we had left it as planned, none of that would have to be done, right?
Correct. If we would have continued on the way we did in Phase One, there would be no change order. We're submitting this early on, we haven't even done this part yet.
So the second quest, the other question I have, it's not a second, it's like, what, third, fourth question? Would be, so what is the effect on the students taking away or leaving the windows? Is there an effect? Is it negligible? Is it, you know, what benefit is it to them compared to the windows in essence? Is it worth the money? That's why I'm getting that.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit of that. So when you go to build something that really connects to the teacher group that says, hey, we've been looking at Phase One, now that we see the windows, we'd actually need more space to put up student work or put up something to hang, and then that's when we have to make a decision like, okay, we're going to change course a bit and actually do something that we know is going to cause a change order, but we know now, speaking to the group of teachers at that school site, that's going to benefit them and their students. And so wall space becomes gold, and if you work in a classroom, and windows are beautiful, but I think when you start taking and putting more windows, you might have a teaching group that says, look, the way the walls are here, we just need more space to hang student work or putting up some type of student expectation on the walls, et cetera. So that's an example of where a work order comes in for the sake of the ground floor wants something different that benefits our students.
I'm just kind of looking at this from a perspective of, okay, everyone had buy-in on this. They bought in on this at one point, now they're changing their minds, and now we're going to spend another $54,000 on it. I just want to know is that had, what was the step that was missed that didn't catch us in the beginning? And is it worth doing this at this point? It's a hard sell for me. I can't see the buy-in on my side to say, yeah, maybe I don't understand the need for the wall space. Maybe that's something that's a little bit outside of my theater, but I'm trying to understand that to understand, you know, the value of that compared to sticking with the plan that was already there.
So I can't speak to who was involved at the earlier part of the planning project for this project, because the first phase was done this past summer, and then the bidding for that was well before that. So I'm not entirely sure if teacher feedback was incorporated when looking at the original project, but I can tell you that at this point, we did receive that feedback and found that it was going to be beneficial for the classroom and the teaching environment. And so us, I'm with you, Mark, we're not in the classroom, and so I value what feedback I get from the principal and the teachers. This is their learning space and their workspace, and so they've brought that to us to say that that would be an improvement in their work environment.
And I'll add, from my experience in the classroom, I taught at Garfield Elementary, and as all you guys know, that one wall is complete, complete windows. It was very challenging as a teacher, because we're, you know, and it's important for us to have different posters on showing student work, and so when we have very limited wall space, it does impact the limited availability for students, and to be able to have the visual anchors and everything that they need. I do remember in our days, we would cover up some of the windows, which wasn't always great, but it was something that we did, because as teachers, we were trying to maximize the space. So speaking from my experience as a classroom teacher, that is one of the reasons why maybe this is a change, is because teachers have expressed a need for additional wall space.
And the funding is from the bond fund?
Yes, and I will say that immediately on the first phase, they wanted us to order light curtains and blinds and other things. So, you know, there was going to be an additional cost for having the wall to ceiling windows in the classroom as well to take into consideration.
Will there be some windows in there at all?
Yes, yes. We're just reducing the amount of windows, but they're still, I believe, going to still have two rows of windows at the very top.
Yeah, if you've ever been in an elementary-
If I may address something that's not being addressed on this, is the wall that we're putting up there, if you go to any of the schools that have the old 1950 windows, you see we painted up about eight foot for safety of the children. People can't, if there's, somebody comes on campus, they can't see into the children.
I was going to mention safety as well.
So this is going to take that and put the windows up on top.
My concern is more of a systems concern, like how we got here, right? Are we do, have we done things? Are we doing things to ensure that this doesn't happen again, right? That we, next time we do have, we've talked to our stakeholders, we've spoken to our teachers, principal, site folk, whatever, right?
Yeah, so when we move to the next phases, like Indianola and places like that, that's going to be incorporated.
Prior to bid time.
Yes, of course. So yeah, the much easier thing would to not bring it forward to you guys and just leave it as is, right? But, you know, incorporating that feedback is something that's important to all our projects, and so we are going to get that feedback at the front end and avoid it, have change orders later on. So we are, we are changing that and incorporating that early on.
Yeah, like from my perspective, it would have been great to have one of them here, the principal or one of the teachers, somebody to kind of give me that, that point of view, because I'm standing here on the outside trying to see where all this fits, and I like the fact Marty brought that up on the safety concern. Because from my perspective and what my job is here, what my duties are here is to use the money that we have wisely to benefit our students, to benefit the staff, and to create an environment that's going to foster learning and safety. And so I'm looking at $54,000 saying, hmm, some of me, you know, someone second guess what they want, now they want something different. That's my first initial opinion of it when I see it. I just need more input to have an idea of what is they're actually asking for. I love the fact you put that, pointed that out, I love the fact that you pointed that out. Myself would just like to have had one of them here to kind of give me that boots-on-the-ground perspective.
Yeah, we could take that into consideration for the next time as well and have somebody speak on their behalf for, in terms of the learning environment. But that's something that we did among Cabinet. We discussed it in Cabinet before even approving this to ensure that it was the best thing for the campus and that project. We do take into consideration the dollar amounts and the prioritization of other projects, that this takes over something else, and we did discuss it, we did have that teacher feedback and decided to move forward with it.
You know, when I have visited elementary schools and, or even at the middle schools, not so much at the high school, but at those schools, those teachers have like every inch of their room seems to have something on it. You know, so I understand that portion, and I understand that the safety part too, because that came into my mind too, that if you have so many windows, the safety of it.
Exactly.
Mark, I would just say, having had experience in the classroom as well, and most recently at the middle school, there's not a lot of space, but the pride that students have seeing their work up on the walls is invaluable. So I could say that even middle school students, when they would come and bring their parents through for open house or back to school, and you had something on the board that they could take their parents and show is invaluable. So that wall space is important, and I agree, if we could get teacher input early on, that would, you know, benefit us all, so.
Okay, any more questions or concerns with that? Do, is there a motion to approve change order number one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Sweet. Number three, resolution FY 2536, California Department of Education and Office of Public Schools Construction.
So on the background of this one, on November 12th of 2024, the district submitted the resolution, and we got it board-approved, and this is for state reimbursement from modernization projects and other things through OPSC. And they pretty much just have a new resolution. We have one on file, but they updated their terms on their resolution, which I believe you have a copy of. And so this is nothing other than just approving their new resolution so that we have it on file so we could continue filing for reimbursement of past projects.
Okay, any questions? Nope. Okay, so with that, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And nobody opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. You bet. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Business Services, resolution FY 2534, authorizing the permanent inter-fund transfer from general fund to deferred fund maintenance, maintenance fund. You're very welcome.
Thank you. So the next two items are similar. We have two resolutions. The first one is for authorizing inter-fund transfer to, from general fund to deferred maintenance, and the other is to our building fund. Both are separate funds from the general fund, and the, excuse me, the board had already approved a resolution to transfer $500,000 from general fund to these funds for facilities maintenance and deferred maintenance projects. However, we wanted to, we are working on the facility master plan and looking at the cash flow for the next nine years, and notice that we will have to have additional dollars set aside, because although we are looking at getting state reimbursement, that's down three to four years from now, if we're lucky. And so we do need to set funds aside to get a lot of the work that we have. Just to give you an idea, we have over $100 million of need in the district, and so our bond funds and our state funds don't cover the entire amount, and so the district does have to set dollars aside. So it would be easier for us if we were to change it from a flat amount to not to exceed 3% so that we have that flexibility to transfer those funds if our budget permits.
Okay, let the questions begin.
And you put that in plain English.
What I'm saying-
So this is, this is that one where we had the $500,000, where we stuck, we would stick $500,000. Now it's a floating, so it doesn't, before we could only do a $500,000 chunk, boom. Now, as everything moves, if we are able to put 480 there, or we could put six something there, right?
If we're able to still meet our reserve of 10%, if we're still showing a balanced budget, if we're doing all, everything is all well, then this is just basically giving us a higher percentage to transfer if we're able to, if our budget permits.
And this is for the deferred maintenance, right?
Deferred maintenance and our building fund. So it, this, the, excuse me, these funds are for our deferred maintenance plans, our facility plans, so it goes towards roofs, playground structures, painting, asphalt, anything like that. Those are things that if we, if we're able to save money as we can, when those projects come up, we have those funding, that funding available, and we're not relying on state funding.
Gotcha.
And that's going to be specifically for that, right?
Deferred maintenance.
Yes.
Next one is capital improvement, but this one's deferred maintenance.
Yeah, this one, so they're both same-
It's the same, basically the same thing. Just one's for deferred maintenance, one's for capital improvement.
We're just changing the language on what you have already approved to, instead of a flat amount, it's a percent, not to exceed percentage.
Gotcha. Cool. And we're taking call, roll call on one at a time?
Yes.
So-
So yeah, we're taking the, we will be taking the vote one at a time, so first-
So what's the downside with this?
The downside?
Yeah, why am I not seeing? I have a feeling I'm not seeing something.
I would say, I can say one downside would be you wouldn't look at much higher reserves into the teens. So there's a, it looks good to have really high reserves, 17, 18% and boast about those high reserves. This allows you to put monies into projects for the future, and, but yet still keep our reserves at the 10%. That's just one of the few. That's one that would say, you can look at it as a, I'd like to see my reserves in the high teens, twenties. This keeps you from having to do that, because you can put monies into the billing funds.
This is for deferred maintenance, so this is for stuff that'll break.
This is to maintain our facilities that, and just so you know too, we don't get additional funding for this outside of state reimbursements. There is no additional dollars given to us to our general fund for, specific for maintenance. There is a requirement that we have to set aside at least 3% of what they give us for it, but that's not giving us dollars for this. So it's up to the district to identify need, develop a plan, and also assign dollars to help meet those needs of the district. So this is just helping us do that.
Okay. Everybody cool with that? Questions, comments? Okay, clear as mud. So on number one, resolution FY 2534, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And nobody's opposed. Cool. Wait, are we supposed to do a roll call on that one?
On the, yeah, we're doing one at a time. So that one was for the deferred maintenance transfer.
Number one and number two are two separate things. We're doing one at a time. We weren't voting one at a time.
Ah.
No, we have to do separately.
Oh, no, 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 no. I mean, you can say, you can say if you-
Well, we all voted unanimously. I see.
All right, carry on.
Okay, so the next one is for resolution 25-40. This is an authorizing a permanent inter-fund transfer from general fund to the building fund. Same language, just a different fund. This one is for any capital projects that we might have.
Okay, so this one is for building stuff. So we have a project in mind, we want to build, this is our savings account for that?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Like if we wanted to build a-
A bathroom.
Yeah.
Or a bathroom.
Yeah, it's for-
That wasn't near as glamorous.
Nick was the one that was really impressed with our bathroom remodel. He's not here tonight.
Very needed sometimes.
I was more assertive. I said school.
Okay. All right, so any questions? No? Okay, is there a motion to approve resolution FY 2540? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Can I do that? Okay, cool. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And nobody is left to oppose. Okay. Number three, second interim report.
All right, so good evening. Tonight, we're going to look at our second interim financial report. We're going to look at our budget reporting timeline, look specifically into our second interim, look at revenues, expenditures, and our multi-year projection, which is our current year and our next two fiscal years, and then any budget adjustments that have occurred since July 1st of this fiscal year. So this is our reporting timeline. This is something that I've shown before just to kind of outline the craziness that is budget reporting. We're usually working out of two years simultaneously. So for example, at the first part of the year, we started the 2425 year, but we still hadn't closed out our 2324 year. And so now here we are presenting to you second interim, but we already kick-started the 2526 budget. So always working in multiple years and trying to make sense of it all, keep it all straight. So that's basically our world, our timeline, and so after second interim, the cycle starts all over, and we'll bring to you in June our budget, our 2526 budget. All right, so this is just a little recap. We brought to you the first interim. First interim was from July 1st through October 31st, and at that point in time, we had the 2425 governor's enacted budget that was issued in July. At that point in time, he had posted COLAs 1.07 in 2425, 2.93 in 2526, and 3.08 in 2627. Also at that time, we had our P2 information from the year prior for 2324, and we incorporated all the program changes that we, that were needed since May, because we billed our budget so early on. And so we also posted all of the carryover funding that we had from the prior year that was reflected in the first interim that we brought to you. But tonight, for second interim, the reporting period is from July 1st through October 31st, so only a couple of months difference from the first interim, so not a lot of changes from first interim. But what we do have at this budget report is the 2526 governor's proposed budget that was issued in January. So our COLAs are reflected there. For 2526, we have 2.43. We were hearing rumors that it was going to be in like the 1 percentage area, but luckily it did reduce a little bit to 2.43, but not as dramatically as we had heard in the 1%. And 2627, the COLA is projected to be 3.52%. And I will say that the COLA is an increase in our funding, but it doesn't translate into an increase in revenue. an increase in revenue, and that's because it's based on our ADA, our average daily attendance. So if we have a reduction in attendance, although we get paid more per student, if they're not showing up, we don't get an increase in revenue.
Is that still the case?
Is what, are we still experiencing a low, yeah, we're not, we're not increasing there, but it wasn't a dramatic drop. It's just kind of steady right now. So the purpose of the second interim report is certifies that the district's ability to meet its financial obligations for current year and the next two fiscal years. This report documents the changes that occurred between budget adoption and January thirty first. So I'm happy and proud to present that Selma Unified has a positive certification, which means that we meet the state's required minimum reserve of three percent, and we have a positive projection for the next two fiscal years. We have to file this report with our Fresno County Office of Education by March seventeenth. All right, so this slide shows our revenue. We have a hundred and twenty seven million dollars. Seventy two percent of that is our LCFF dollars. We'd have a, a small percentage of federal and twenty one, or twenty one million in state funding. The next slide is for our expenditures. So we have a hundred and forty seven million dollars in expenditures. The bulk of our expenditures is related to salaries and benefits at almost sixty seven percent. So we are in the people business. The bulk of our expenditures is in the staff that we have. And so these are all the budget adjustments that have occurred since July first. I know you noticed in the last slide that our expenditures exceeded our revenue, so this is, this is why. So as I mentioned in first interim, we did incorporate our carryover from last year. So here's a breakdown of what the changes were, what the variances. So at adopted budget, we had presented a hundred and twenty six million dollars in revenue and a hundred and twenty eight million dollars in expenditures. But at second interim, we're showing a hundred and twenty seven million dollars in revenue and a hundred and forty seven million dollars in expenditures. That is showing a nineteen point nine million dollar deficit. And so the, the following is how that, that, what the breakdown is. So for revenue, we did have an increase of a one point one million dollars. So we did have a decrease in our LCFF, but we did have an increase in Medi-Cal and our transportation add-on. We also got a Golden Pathways grant. And then our deferred revenue, which is revenue that we had from last year, got brought forward. That was about two million dollars. And then as we get our allocations, we make some miscellaneous revenue adjustments across all of our funding, and that was five hundred and eighty two thousand dollars. So overall, there was a slight increase of a million dollars in our revenue. As far as our expenditures, a lot of this is repeat from first interim. Like I mentioned, there's not a lot of activity for second interim. It just basically mirrors the first interim. But the majority of what our expenditures show is carryover. So what that means is we got the dollars in prior year, but we're allowed to spend it in current year. So the only thing that's reflected in the budget is the expenditure side, not the revenue side. But that revenue did fall into our reserves, and so it's actually meant to, so when you see the deficit, it's meant the funding that we receive is in our reserves, so we're just dipping into that to cover for it. So we treat carryover as a one-time expense. In, in order to look at our operational budget, we take out all one-time expenditures. So that's our carryover. And our one-time expenses like HVAC, also in the budget is the CSCA retro, so that was from the, the year prior reflected here, so we have to take that out. We had some, some furniture expenditures, some new vehicles. Those are all one-time expenditures that we take out alongside the carryover to, to see what our true balance is. And so once we do that, we're, we have a surplus budget of two point seven million. All right, so the next piece for the second interim is to again look at our multi-year projection. And so some of the things we include, some of the assumptions we include in the NYPD are as follows. So for negotiations, as you know, we did have an agreement for twenty four, twenty five to increase the health and welfare cap by one thousand dollars. So that's incorporated in there. And twenty five, twenty six, we're expecting to get a four point fifteen percent salary increase and two hundred and seventy five dollar health and welfare cap increase. So that's folded into the budget. It's incorporated into the budget that we are presenting to you tonight. Since we, it's still out for negotiate, we, we have not started negotiation for twenty six, twenty seven, there's nothing built into the budget on that, in that regard. We do take a look at our staffing projections, and in twenty five, twenty six, we incorporate any retirees. So retirees are usually at the top end of the salary schedule, and then we, we get the newer teachers at the lower end of the salary schedule, so there's some savings there. We take a look at ADA projections, and there is a slight dip in twenty five, twenty six, and then it goes up a little bit in twenty six, twenty seven. We incorporate all of the, the PERS increases. So if you notice, from twenty four, twenty five to twenty six, twenty seven, there is a one percent increase for PERS. That's pretty significant to our budget. We incorporate the COLA percentages that the governor has, has released. We all know that those are projections and those may change. We're, we're going to have a governor's may revise in May, and at that point, we'll see if the COLA percentages change yet again. We also have some assignments. So I've mentioned this to you before, that for twenty four, twenty five in the current year, knowing that we're going to have the salary increase for next year, we earmark two point two million dollars in the current year to condition the budget for the increase in salary and benefits for next year. So even with earmarking that, we are showing a ten point five three reserves in the current year. And then other assignments that we're looking at in the out years is for our facility master plan. As I mentioned, we have over a hundred million dollars of need out there for the district and not enough funding, so we do need to set some dollars aside to help offset that. We also need to look at, we want to continue to retrofit our buses with AC. A lot of, the majority of our buses don't have AC, so we're hoping to change that. And then we also need to purchase some white fleet vehicles as well. So knowing those, we have incorporated some dollars, earmarked some dollars there for that as well. And as I mentioned earlier with the resolutions, in twenty five, twenty six, we weren't able to make a transfer to Fund four hundred or Fund fourteen, which is the deferred maintenance and the building fund. Because again, we needed to make sure we had the, we met the requirements of the percentage of our reserves and make sure that we met the criteria before transferring it. So if that makes you feel a little bit better that, you know, although you're giving me the flexibility to transfer more, I won't do it unless our budget permits. And then in twenty six, twenty seven, we were able to set aside a million dollars for facilities and deferred maintenance. So as you look, we have very healthy reserves in twenty four, twenty five, again a ten point five three percent. In twenty five, twenty six, eleven point seventy two percent. And in twenty six, twenty seven, we have twelve point six percent. So this is what it looks like in dollar form. So for twenty four, twenty five, as I mentioned in the previous slides, we are showing a deficit of nineteen point nine million dollars. But again, once we take out the carryover and the one-time funds, we have a surplus there. And then in twenty five, twenty six, and twenty six, twenty seven, we are showing a surplus, and we're also showing the higher reserve amounts in those years as well. So just want to reiterate that we are looking pretty good. We have a positive certification, over ten percent in reserves. The, when the state withdrew the entire balance of the reserve to shield us from cuts, that actually took the, the cap of ten percent. If you recall, we had a ten percent cap from the state requiring us to not exceed that. So now that that's been lifted, we are able to go over that ten percent, and thankfully we're in a place that we can. So we have healthy reserves, we have a positive certification. And so from here, the county office will audit our second interim and verify all the information that I just presented to you tonight and send a letter to the board president and our superintendent showing that yes, we are indeed a positive certification. The next big thing that we'll do is our twenty five, twenty six budget. I know, we're excited. So we'll bring the first read to you in the first meeting in June, and then we'll adopt the budget in the second meeting, and that, we'll see how our twenty five, twenty six budget looks at that point. Any questions?
This is good. I mean, if you listen to stuff on, on social media, the sky's falling, but this is nice. The sky's not falling. We're actually doing okay.
Oh, don't listen to social media.
So this is good, and it kind of shows that the three-year thing that we did is working really well because it gives us a better way to navigate. It's a little more stable and we can focus on stuff that matters.
Exactly, and we are able, knowing what it is already, we're able to plan, we're able to condition the budget, we're able to situate ourselves and be prepared for it. So it.
And I think as a, as a total, both the district and our collective bargaining units all together, doing this is a very good thing. It gives us that stability, it gives us that growth. I think if it wasn't for this three-year thing, we would have a different story going on right now.
Thank you, Jessica.
I do want to say something here that I think is very important. I want to first thank Jessica and her team. But for districts to recondition themselves after COVID when it comes to fiscal spending has been very hard. You, it's just hard to imagine, but you see it at the ground floor when you have hard conversations with people who might have during those three, four years of COVID monies coming into the millions, having open checkbooks and no ceiling to purchase orders. Those had to be conversations that Jessica and her team had to have with people. We had to hit buttons that say you cannot spend beyond this amount, have to ask for more. It sounds easy right here, but the actual human connection and discussions of those are never easy. Having to reestablish how we utilize monies as a district had to be done because it was some wild times during COVID. It's no fault of anyone. That's what was happening. Money was coming in higher than ever, which throws you off. So having to recondition the people was a lot of the work that our fiscal team did. So I wanted to thank Jessica and her team. Putting this together is not easy. And having a budget in California that is this stable and looks as good, I truly appreciate it. It's not an easy thing to do nowadays. It took a lot of discipline by all. So I want to thank all the employees and everyone who had those tough conversations and her team too, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. I just noticed though that this is an action item. So we are supposed to accept that she just told us what's going on? Okay, well, that's the case. Do I have a motion to accept that Jessica just told us what's going on? Yes, I'll make a motion.
We're accepting the report, yes.
You make a motion? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board of Trustees in one motion. There is no discussion of these items before the board vote unless a member of the board, staff, or public requests a specific item be discussed and/or be removed from the consent agenda. It is understood that the administration recommends approval on all consent items. Each item on the consent agenda approved by the members of the governing board shall be deemed to have been considered in full and adopted as recommended. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And nobody opposed? Okay, that's it. We're almost there, guys. Hang in there. We're, we're making it. Okay, board, the board report. Who wants to go first? Anybody? Mark, you want to go first?
Okay.
Okay.
Not a whole lot to report. It's going to be St. Patrick's Day weekend, so don't forget to wear your green and find your four-leaf clovers, and may you be blessed with the, with the pot of gold.
That's what I got. Sweet. Stella, you have?
I just appreciated, again, the opportunity to be at the band, the first annual.
That was cool.
Where'd you go?
fundraiser.
Benefit dinner.
Yeah.
And looking forward to site visits this week. I have, I'm going to be out, site visits starting at Roosevelt on Thursday with Mr. Gomes. Looking forward to that.
Oh, Estella?
Are you done? Oh, okay. Well, I, you know how I love sports. I attended the Heartland Boys Basketball Game, and it was quite fun, as well as the, today, the, the Heartland Girls Basketball Game. And, and we also, all of us attended a special meeting that we totally enjoyed on that Saturday and got a lot out of it. And I, I too thought the band fundraiser dinner was very nice, very good. I, I, I enjoyed that as well. And then I attended, along with a bunch of other people, and the soccer player, Mr. Gomes, the Selma High Soccer Boys Playoffs, because Mr. Gomes wanted to be in the, in the game. But it, they did a good job. They, I was very proud of them. They did a great, great job. And I also attended the boys and girls basketball elementary tournament that just happened. So those are all fun things, mostly sports. I'm the sports person, I guess. And I just want to also say that I was very excited and proud of all the things our young people and our staff are doing. It was very nice to see Avid. It was nice to see the wrestlers. It was nice to see Hartman. And it was just nice to see the very positive our district is producing.
Right on. Thanks, Estella. Okay, what have I done? So yeah, tagging on to that, I, I love seeing it. It's such a testament to our students, our staff, everybody. It's just fun to watch. It's, it's neat to see. It's fun to be a part of. I, I had the opportunity, I think the last board meeting helped me out, somebody, was Eric White, and they did the Young Men's and Women's Alliance, right? And I have had so many people come to me and talk to me about that from other districts. People that I've talked to, they're like, yes, that's what we need. And so it's just super awesome to hear other people bragging about us again. So I did get to, I, I get to be a champion, right, cheerleader without pom-poms. I, I got to go to the, the, the Band of Fit, and if, if he shakes that name, I'm going to call that the Band Benefit Dinner. If he uses it as a Band of Fit, I want some credit, right? That was awesome, right? Those, those kids are fantastic. Got to go to the soccer game and, and, and watch somebody have to almost tackle Mr. Gomes so he didn't run out there. You know, he was making calls and, yeah. And I got to meet with Ed Services. Unbelievable, right? You guys are, are fantastic, all of you. There's so much that happens within a district, and it, it is just, I, I enjoy, it's like finding little gems everywhere, and I enjoy finding them because you guys are everywhere, and I just can't say enough. So that's all I got. Superintendent Gomes, you're up.
All right, thank you. TK, kindergarten registration for twenty five, twenty six school year is opening now, so word out to families that you can begin the process by registering online and completing the online registration, and please call the district office to schedule an in-person appointment to finalize registration. So full details are on our website and Parents Square. Also, open house season's kicking off. This Thursday, ALMS Open House, starting at five o'clock. I heard five thirty, so probably be a little earlier. I encourage all families to attend their child's school and celebrate the hard work and achievements. For a full list of open house dates and times, please, please visit the district events calendar on our website, and you'll see them all. And Rotary Track Meet has been postponed. It was going to be this Friday, the big track meet, but it's raining. And so we're going to move it to next Wednesday. Is that still the final next Wednesday, is what I heard? Yeah, I got down here next Wednesday. I went and spoke. Is that still, yeah. So it's next Wednesday, March nineteenth, at Stanley Stadium, our Rotary Elementary Track Meet. Come on out. And that's it.
Okay, so all we have left is to adjourn? We're almost there. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, guys.